Good evening and welcome to the December 13th, 2022 Work Session and Combined Regular Meeting of the Gasson County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as the Commissioner of the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television and live streaming audience, I would like to present your Gasson County Commissioners, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Chair of Township.
Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Kathy Kloniger, Dallas Township.
Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
Good afternoon. Bob Hovis, Crowthers Mountain Township.
Tom Keeger, Gastonia.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for that. We will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation given by Commissioner Hovis, the Pledge of Allegiance given by Commissioner Fraley.
If you'd all please bow with me. Gracious Father, we come to you to conduct the business of the county tonight, or this afternoon, keeping in mind the joy of this season, all the opportunities that we have to reach out to others, to show our love and care for the many out there who need that. Father, continue to let us bless others' lives and let us continue to be a blessing in your service. We ask that in his name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now call to order the December 13th Work Session. First area item of the agenda is Proclamations, Commandations, and Awards. Certificates of appreciation for public service were sent out to the following. James Heffernan, Animal Care and Enforcement Advisory Board. Steve Dalton, Fireman's Relief Fund. Janice Kosner, Library Board of Trustees. Deborah Ali, Planning Board. Mariana Treo, Workforce Development Board. The next item is Presentations. I will now call on Mr. William B. Stetson, Gasson County Attorney, for Procedures and Board Procedures Update. Esquire Stetson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the Board of Procedures for this Board was last updated in 1979, and so there are obviously some things that need to be changed to reflect current practices, current departments, and things like that. There was an attempt to do this in 1996, and I believe another attempt in 2018 or 19 to update the procedures, and those did not go through. And so I wanted to tell you what I've worked on as far as a draft set of procedures for the Board, and then I wanted to get from you some guidance on how you would like me to receive your guidance to make sure these procedures reflect your wishes. And so I think that'll be a little bit of a process, but I can assure you, it won't be a long process. I think we can get a full, complete draft to you, based on your schedule is when you can get feedback back to me. So what I started with was updating the specific rules of meetings. Robert's rules haven't changed a lot. There is a draft, best practices draft from the School of Government that Trey Allen prepared. I incorporated some of that, or most of that, into this current draft. Did flush out some of the things on the order of motions and that sort of thing. I don't think those any member of the Board would find controversial, but I would like to discuss those with you at your pleasure. The more complicated part was your procedures include rules for budgeting, purchasing, contracts, personnel, ethics, grants, delegations of authority to the manager, to the finance officer, processes for filling appointments, standing committees, temporary committees, and statutory boards. And so there was a lot of those things to update. As a philosophical approach, in the update of the draft that I'll have ready for you at your convenience, I tried to remove the specifics. So the Board's allowed to have standing committees. The 1979 draft lists four standing committees that no longer exist and haven't, as far as I can tell, since the 80s. And so instead of listing the individual committees, the Board has authority to do these things and will do them at their pleasure. And I thought that was a way we wouldn't have to have these procedures updated every two years or so. Another change or approach would be the draft, the 1979 draft, when it talks about a statute, lists out the items in the statute that you have to comply with. Well, each year statutes probably change, which means these Board procedures should be updated each year, and they're not. And so instead, I'll refer to the individual statutes in the procedures and then provide you as Board members with those statutes when they change each year. And so we'll keep them current without having to change them every year. We do have some, with the DHHS, combining DSS and Health, although a lot of changes were required in those Boards. With the individual Board appointment process, since the clerk manages a lot of that process, instead of listing every single Board in the organizational or the procedural document, those are all listed on the website, which is kept current. I think instead the procedures will say the Board has authority, appointments to these Boards, these are how appointments are handled, the website maintains the list. That was sort of the approach to updating these documents. Other things I made significant suggestions and changes were to the Board Ethics Policy. There were two recent statutes in the last year about ethics and conflicts of interest. We've had separate conversations on both of those statutes, and we've even gone over a form on conflicts of interest on the Boards you may serve on outside of this Board, to address that. But I wanted to incorporate those into the ethics, so anybody on the Board will be able to turn quickly through the document and know what their ethical responsibilities were, so we wouldn't have any problems with that sort of thing. Also clarified how to fill vacancies on this Board. The 1979 draft had three different methods of filling vacancies, depending on whether the Commissioner who vacated the seat was serving a two-year term, a four-year term, or a six-year term. We only have four-year terms now, so we're able to streamline that quite a bit. One of the areas I'll need your help on is philosophy of the Board. There was about a, there is about a three or four-page section in the procedures that talks about the philosophy of government in Gasson County. That document, as I said, was adopted in 1979, so does require some updating to the philosophy of this Board and the Board going forward. Next steps from you all is, I would like to know from, either from you, Mr. Chairman, or from the Board as a whole, how you would like to give me individualized or group feedback on what you want in your procedures. I don't want to submit a document to you all with procedures that are not coming from you. And so there are several areas that we'll have specific questions about, and I'll need to, Alan, you need to ask individual or group Board members that, but I don't want to, I don't want to get out ahead of what you have tasked me to do.
I think for what we would look for now, going forward for your, is each individual Commissioner, set up a time with you, whether it be a phone, or however you want to get it, that appointment set up. We get these things set, and we'll schedule a date for, in January, to adopt these from you, seeing how they go for the work session, and then it can be adopted in the second meeting during the month, if that's okay with you. Esquire Stetson.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. That's a timeline I can meet, and I will arrange to meet with each Commissioner individually. If there are things that, there are differences among the Commissioners, then I'll bring them back to the Board as a whole for you all to resolve in your discretion. That's all, sir.
Thank you so much. This adjournment of our work session, this concludes our work session for tonight. The regular meeting will convene immediately and take a reset, or not going to take a recess. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna S. Buff, at 704-866-3196. And thanks to Angela and staff for all the hard work they've done to check in past couple of weeks, and look forward to seeing more from you. I would now call to order the December 13th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Gasson County Board of Commissioners. First item on the agenda is Public Hearing. The Commission will take citizens' comments on public hearing to designate the S.J. and Ollie Durham House located at 223 West Alabama Avenue, Bessemer City, North Carolina, Gasson County, as a historic property. Before we begin, let me outline the rules and procedures of hearing. Citizens wishing to make comments will be recognized by the Chair, then requested a step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. All questions should be directed toward the Chair. For response, the Chair shall rule on all points of order. Do I hear a motion to go into public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The County Commission will now take comments on an ordinance to designate S.J. and Ollie Durham House located at 223 West Alabama Avenue, Bessemer City, North Carolina, Gasson County, as historic property pursuant to Part IV, Chapters 160D of the General Statute to North Carolina. I will now ask Mr. Robert Carpenter, Historic Preservation Commission, will provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to be in here and being with you guys and ladies. I am very happy and on behalf of the Gasson County Historic Preservation Commission to present to you an opportunity to designate the S.J. and Ollie Durham House at 223 Alabama Avenue in Bessemer City. On September the 20th, let me see, there we go, it did work. On September 20th, our Commission approved designation of this house as a historic property. On October the 23rd, the State Preservation Commission agreed with our Commission that the Durham House, and I quote their letter, "is of local historical significance because of its architectural significance and its association with the Durham family." On November the 14th, I presented this designation to the Bessemer City Council, and they unanimously approved it. This beautiful house and this designation report, which you have, documents the history and the architecture and the significance of Mr. and Mrs. Durham, who maintained a presence not only in Gasson County, but also in the state and the nation. Built in 1896 and named Mount Calm, it is one of the oldest in Bessemer City, is in incredible condition today, and was known by some as the finest house in Bessemer City. It had the first telephone, indoor toilets in town, and used radiator steam heat. The home was often used by members of the Odell Methodist Church and the community for various community activities. The basement was also used in 1913 and 14 as a school so that students could graduate on time. The house became a centerpiece of town activities. The Durums constructed Mount Calm in a free classic Queen Anne-style architecture. The two-story home with basement has seven fireplaces with decorative mantles, classic Doric front porch columns, and stained glass windows. The flooring is white pine and hard pine. The complex roofings consist of a hip roof with lower cross gables, as well as two separate gabled bays on the eastern elevation. With original windows and brick chimneys, the front door is a single-leaf French door with transom window. Quoting from the report, "Its integrity of design, setting, workmanship, materials, feeling, association, and location makes the Durham House special." The Durums were also special, and the designation is partially because of their civic work, economic development, community, and political activity. S.J. Durham was a native of neighboring Cleveland County, son of prominent leader Plato Durham, who has a state historic marker for him in Shelby. S.J. received a quality education at Trinity College, now Duke University, where he developed debating and oratorical skills. Admitted to the North Carolina Bar, he became an attorney, and later served as County Commissioner, on the County School Board, and Federal District Attorney for the Western District of North Carolina, appointed by President Woodrow Wilson. He moved among governors and presidents, and often introduced governors at local events here in Gasson County. He also supported and spoke at many church and civic activities. His wife, Ollie Odell Durham, was the daughter of John M. Durham, a Concord textile magnate who partnered with S.J. Durham to lead the Southern Textile Mills, Osage Mill, which you guys approved, I think, as a historic property recently. Lucy Peniger, of course, gave that designation here because I had to teach class that night, or I'd have been here and you'd have had to see me again. Ms. Durham participated also in many church and civic activities. For these reasons, the HPC enthusiastically recommends designation of the Durham House as a historic landmark. There's the Osage Mill. And there's another picture of the beautiful house. I want to introduce to you at this time is Glenda Lamar, who is the current owner, and thank her for her enthusiastic support in this designation process and procedure and all the work that she has helped us with. Also, I want to recommend, note to you that some of our Board members are present, Mr. Mike Peters and Charlene Ha said she was coming, but I don't see her, so she might show up later. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. We will push you back just a second, and if anybody does, we'll have you come back up. Any comments from the applicant that you wish to say, ma'am? Could please step to this microphone. Thank you.
First, I just want to thank you, Robert, for that beautiful presentation, and I feel like the Durham House, I mean, it's a very deserving house in the Bessemer City community, and really, it's been a, it's been a long time coming, and I just feel so honored just to be able to be a part of it, you know, and helping this house to get the recognition that it is long deserved, and I say thank you, Robert, Lucy, you know, everybody that has worked on getting this house to be recognized, and I also want to lastly thank you for your consideration and your approval. Thank you.
Are there any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing now, are there any comments from the Board of Commissioners? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed, and thank you all. Is there a motion? A motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Keeger? Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. This concludes tonight's public hearing. The next item on the agenda is for the approval of the business agenda. Are there any revisions to the business agenda, or any items that needs to be pulled? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion to approve the business agenda with no items pulled for the?
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in, go ahead.
I'm looking forward, I can't.
Take your time.
Oh, okay. It was, I had a question about the Cramerton Library item S., but we've discussed that already at the planning retreat, so I'm good.
No problem. There are a motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Fraley, I think that was correct. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Adam, anybody on citizens' recognition?
No, sir.
Thank you. Citizens' recognition was, no one had signed up, so we'll move on from that one. Approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of it.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. No items were pulled from the consent agenda, no items were added by the majority, we've been right along. Next item is appointments. Commissioner Fraley.
I have a question, Chairman.
Commissioner Worley.
Whoa, 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 stop, sorry.
Mr. Fraley.
Reappointment for Economic Development Commission Travis Wallace.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Worley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two this evening. First one, Industrials, Facilities, and Pollution Control Financing Authority, application from Rudy Pomeroy. And secondly, a reappointment of David Pesour to the Gasson or the Caramont Health Board of Directors. Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Kloniger.
No appointments at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Johnson.
I have one appointment. It's for the Economic Development Commission and its wage group.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Rob Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have four reappointments and one new appointment. I'll start with the reappointments. We'll do all these with one vote, if that's.
Yes, sir.
Makes your pleasure. Economic Development Commission, reappoint Stephen Weitzel. The Caramont Health Board of Directors, Mr. Thomas J. Ostel. The Sarah Local Planning Committee to reappoint Assistant Chief Myron Seller. The Sarah Local Planning Commission to reappoint Mr. John Watts. And a new appointment to the Library Board of Trustees, Janice Kosner has stepped off of that, is Andrea M. Nixon.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Keeger.
Just one, Samantha Die, reappointment to the Sarah Local Planning Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right, we're going to have a lot going on here. Let me get my Sarah Local Planning reappointment requested by Mr. Earl Withers, and Sarah Local Planning reappointment by Ms. Christina Rodite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. We will go to full Board appointments. These are, most of them have either an application received or reappointment as we go through. Caramont Board of Health, Commissioner Bob Hovis.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Equalization Board and Review, application was received by Mitzi Burnett. Seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next one, Equalization Board and Review, Brian Wyneth, reappointment requested.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next one is the Fireman's Relief Fund, Board of Trustees, Mr. Douglas Mayberry.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kloniger. All, any discussion? All in favor? You might know him. Fireman's Relief Fund, application received from Ronald Hale.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The Gasson Business Association, Commissioner Tom Keeger, reappointment requested.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? I said, no, who said it? Next one is Moncross Area Chamber, Commissioner Ronnie Worley.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right. Chair appointments. It'll be dicey. Centralized Council of Government, Commissioner Designee Bob Hovis.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next one, Economic Development Commissioner, Commissioner Tom Keeger.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Farmers Market Advisory Board, Commissioner Bob Hovis.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? Transportation Advisory Committee, Commissioner Ronnie Worley.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Transportation Advisory Committee, Commissioner Alan Fraley.
Second.
Commissioner, seconded by Commissioner Keeger. All in favor? You're the official, and Commissioner Worley is the alternate. I'm sorry. It's on here, but I didn't read it that way. I apologize. It's my fault. It's my fault. The next was Equalization Review Board, Brian Wyneth, for his second term as Chairman. Need a second on that.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right. Reports, Commissioner Fraley. Commissioner Worley.
No reports seen.
Commissioner Kloniger.
No reports.
Commissioner Johnson.
No reports.
Commissioner Hovis.
Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Keeger.
Not this evening.
Madam County Manager, your report, please, ma'am.
Just two pieces of information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In follow-up to our planning session earlier today, I've got two items for you. First of all, I'll point out the ARPA project update. After you have time to look that over, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to let me know. I was relatively close in my estimation of 40% in terms of what you all have allocated, but we'll continue to keep you updated on that. The second piece of information is related to the conversation around the library, potentially in Cramerton. Provided some information for you there at the bottom of the page, including some of the ongoing operating costs that we had spoken about. If you turn that over, you can see some additional pictures and information about the property. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Esquire Stetson. No reports, sir. Thank you, sir.
Other matters, I do have a few I want to talk about real quick. I want to recognize in our Gasson County Police Department, exceptional people. SRO Jeff Thompson was designated as a hometown hero by the Governor today. Some of the items he had been doing is a blanket drive, a domestic violence drive, a community service for clubs at the high school he had done. So want to say thank you to him and appreciate you guys for the things you do, and we are on top of it right now. I know that Sheriff Kloniger was also invited up there today as well. This is our last meeting before we go into Christmas, so from our Board and from the Gasson County Government, we would like to wish each and every citizen and employee a Merry Christmas. I think we had a special Christmas card that we wanted to designate, as you see from the Step Brothers crew. But it's funny, but we also have a real meaning for what this season stands for, and we want to thank you. for what this season stands for, and we want to thank everybody and hope they have a safe and Merry Christmas. And we wish you the best of intentions during this holiday season, and thank you. We will not have another meeting as we've combined these two meetings, so this will be the last one before that. So I wanted to make sure we said that. But tonight, this concludes our meeting for tonight. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please do your questions or comments to Ms. Angela, 704-866-3196. Hit zero after that, you get to her. But do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Motion made by Commissioner Keeger, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor? Good night, Ebenezer Scrooge.
See you later.